And the first order of business will to will lead to deal with the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on treaty twenty, Mische Sagi territory, in the traditional territory of the Mische Sagi and Chinmawo nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaty's first nations, which are Curve Lake, Rama, Hiawatha, Alderville, Coo Dog Island, Bolso Lake, and Georgina Island First Nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area, recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as the stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Item three is the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion be resolved that the county of the Halliburton County Library Board adopts the agenda for September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Does that move, please? Paul?
Hi, Cease.
Okay.
And in fact, I do recall that Walt said that he was in Toronto, I think with his grandkids. So Walt probably isn't.
There's the full corn. Okay, that's great. I've got a mover and second motion carried. Declaration of pecuniary interest. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library adopts the consent agenda for the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting as presented. May I have a mover and second, please? Moved by Adele.
And then by Cease.
All in favor? Do you, Chris, financial report?
Sure thing. And of course, if anyone has any questions about the librarians' report or the circulation statistics, I can speak to that as well. The financial report is again fully accessible. It's a two-pager as always, and we're on track. I think at least one board member has brought up that we appear to be on track for spending, and that's true. The handy line in our report is the percentage in the last column, percentage variance, and it tells you where you should be. And then for new board members, I'll just remind everyone that we are still waiting to get our PLOG funding, which every year we apply, we're being migrated to a new provincial Ontario system called My Account. And so we are no longer one key users, and I've done the transition for that normally. By now, I would have submitted the PLOG grant and signed off on that, but everything's been a bit delayed. So as you'll recall, last year, we were waiting right up until, I think, almost the second week of December before the money was confirmed in our account. And I expect it may be like that again this year. But like I said, we're in good shape, and I can speak more to broader review of financing for into next year as well later when we talk about budget. Are there any specific questions I can answer about the financial report?
I don't see any hands up, Chris.
Okay.
While you're on that, before we go through. Next item on the agenda. Are there any questions or concerns with consent agenda reports particularly versus reporting? Very well done.
Thanks. The September report is always longer because it includes information right from the middle of June all the way to the first week of September usually. So it's really fulsome. And I have become aware that the friends appreciate receiving this report. So in the morning, when it comes out, I also forward it to the friends just to see what we're up to as well and how their fundraising helps us.
Okay, I don't hear anything else. So I'll have a motion be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the financial report as presented. Moved by? Lisa. I was gonna say it, Lisa, how about you do it? Okay, and second by? Cease, okay, thank you. Now, the next item of business is the library policies. So, Chris, I'll turn it over to you, and you can walk us through how the policies got here and what the changes are before we deal with them, okay?
Sure, so we decided with the policy committee we would meet four times per year. So we did meet towards the end of June. We broke down the four-year plan into a spreadsheet for what was remaining to be reviewed, and we made a fair bit of progress in that we put before the policy committee eleven separate policies. Today, we're prepared to share with the full board six of those. There were five along the lines of art policy donations and gift giving for employees that we were reviewing the numbers. So Andrea and I had to take it back to our admin team. And so we're going to re-present those back to the policy committee just for double check about whether those numbers are appropriate, and then we can pass those as a full board, too. But today, I thought we'd make some progress if we could approve these six policies. The next step after this is that they get posted as they're completed on our website. So we're really pleased to get those out now on that page. You'll notice in the board package that there's a notation at the end of each policy number. So for example, the first one, BL-05, meetings of the board, and then AC. So this is accessible and as of, so it just lets us know that we've done our accessibility conversion, and it's ready for the website. But I thought briefly I would just walk you through some of the changes that might have occurred, such as the first one I mentioned. And this is in the format, the modern format with our new logo as well. So BL-5 is a bylaw, and it's meetings of the board. It's good until 2026. And changes that occurred on your board package is page twenty-seven. You'll notice any changes were made and highlighted. So for example, the agenda, the agenda will be pre-published and available to board members in advance by no later than noon on the Friday preceding a meeting, and published in the public by noon on the Monday before the meeting, except in the case of a statutory holiday, when the agenda will be published by noon on Tuesday. So a lot of things that we do just hadn't really been codified before in policy. And over time, with CEOs that come and go, there have been changes to the style, you know, and how we get information to people. But this is how we've done it for the last couple of years, and it seems to be working. So we captured that in section five of this first policy. There's also part B, which is unsigned draft minutes will be sent to library board members within one week following a board meeting. So that's when we wrap up this meeting. You'll now receive a copy of that. And I believe this was Adele's suggestion, which I think is a good one, because that way you'll notice while it's still fresh if there's any changes or errors that you want to bring to our attention. And then a couple of things were just glossed out, such as the branch services librarian report, that position no longer exists, and it's incorporated anyway in the librarian's report, that information. And that's more or less it for the first policy.
Chris, I have a motion for each policy to whether when you're finished with policy, okay? So I have a motion be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts policy BL-05, meeting of the board as presented. Any questions?
Paul? I have a question. I'm just curious why there's a listing of meeting items, but it's slightly different from the meeting agenda that we're using today. Like the consent and consolidates a number of the items. Does it make some arm of ice or that the policy, not to undermine the work you've done, if they would be, then it would reflect what we're actually doing in the agenda?
So when we have our Civic Web or iCompass software in the background, what Melanie has is that list. And there are some placeholder things that we only include when we use them. So they do exist on our backend of the policymaking software. But we sort of toggle them off when we just don't want to make it pages and pages. But no, fair point, and that's probably not clear. I think it's more clear for staff working on that.
It's just here today, the consent agenda has the draft minutes, the librarian's report, circulation stats, and then a section for working committee reports. But the listing in the policy is somewhat different.
Okay, we can take a look at the order.
I mean.
That's absolutely a good point, because we want to make sense when we're comparing over time. I can tell you that iCompass does get updated, just like every software, and sometimes things change. So we should be able to control our own workflows.
Yeah, yeah, we should.
Thanks, so I'll put that on that.
Any other questions on that policy? Seeing none, may I have a mover and second, please? Moved by Liz. Seconded by Adele. I would assume there are no other questions, because it will be asked on the first time. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Good. The next policy in the list of six is the election of officers, which is also a bylaw, BL, changes to propose to this one. It's been working very well for us. It is a very particular one that comes out at the beginning of every year in that we look for a library board chair, and it's just outlining a process that we use to create these positions. So there are no changes proposed to that one.
Thank you. Any questions on this? This is what we've been using for a while. So I have a motion be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts policy BL-606, election of officers as presented. May I have a mover, please? Paul? Seconded by Lisa. All in favor? Harry?
Okay, the third one is the foundational document. So this is one of our four core documents. And as it turns out, the intellectual freedom policy is more important than ever before, not just our library, but libraries across Canada. This is a statement that comes from the Canadian Foundation of Library Associations. So it's been in existence for some time. It hasn't changed. I did go back to their original site. It really just outlines the ethic and mindset of librarians and library workers across Canada. It's worth reading if, you know, in the case of us defending, say, drag queen storytime or people who are choosing to tell us what books should be banned in the library, we always revert to these, this type of a foundational document to help us give words to what our mandate is. This is agreed on by hundreds of libraries, and I'm sure it gets updated every so often. But in this case, the only change proposed is at the end, because whenever you access a website, there's a sort of a way to denote that. So accessed on June ninth, 2023, and I just put in that it was reviewed at this time to confirm that, you know, it's up to date. So the only thing we need to change, I just noticed, is the next review. It'll also be 2026 at the bottom.
Cease, you have a question?
Yeah, it's just, I don't know if anybody's been paying much attention to the news and what's happening in school libraries at the moment. They're basically trashing half the books. I'm assuming that that level of censorship does not apply to us.
Yeah, that's a great point. I've been watching as a very similar playbook has been rolling out that we saw in Florida, Texas, Kentucky, and other such states. And it really is concerning that books like Harry Potter and even The Hungry Caterpillar, we all grew up loving and reading, are being taken off. In fact, I heard that some books before 2008 were just weeded automatically without any thought in the value. So these are concepts that, you know, school librarians are still in touch on social media with public librarians and academic librarians and special librarians. And this does go against intellectual freedom, in my opinion. We do face the same sort of challenges, Cease. We do get either letters or emails. Sometimes people filling out our recommendation for reconsideration of library materials, which is a lot of work to reply to those folks. We did actually receive one at the beginning of summer. They wanted to ban a book from our library that they felt the war on Ukraine was incorrect, and it was biased. But when we actually looked at the source of where the complaint came from, they weren't a resident, they hadn't been a member of our library. And when I checked with other libraries, I said, really, you should spend time to liaise with your own community. If you're going to spend four hours in a response, and the person's just doing it wherever they drive through at the Tim Hortons, and they go to the library to put in their complaint, then maybe it's not a good use of our time. So that's one of the things I was going to bring to the policy committee, that we could have a line indicating, you know, what we do respond to. Because there are people that will just kind of blanket if they can find a digital way to complain from their desk and wherever they are.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point.
There are these folks that sort of bring a campaign against teachers, librarians. And, you know, we did discuss this even in the media about how we had someone dropping in our Dropbox comments about the types of programs or books that we had.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. But, Chris, I have a question. Does the, does the library, the Canadian Federation of Library Association have any role in deciding whether or not a book should be left on the shelf or not? So if you get a complaint from someone, from one of our library members, and we disagree with it, and they don't accept our position, does this organization get involved and try to resolve that?
No, in fact, the next step, if there's an appeal process, takes place at this board level. So we would bring our concerns and the complaint to you for discussion. But to advise that conversation, we would look at our foundational documents. We would write to other libraries to say, have you been receiving complaints about these, say, top ten most banned books in Canada? And there would be a fulsome discussion that would also be public. So, you know, we discussed whether we would do this with the Mine Comp challenge that we received in 2021. But when we put forward the response, the person actually came in and talked to me, and we found a common ground. So I reached out upon her suggestion to the Simon Waisenfeld Centre in Toronto, and it was a compromise, so we didn't have to go further. But there are other, you know, well-funded organizations such as big city libraries that we can call up and advise on if you had questions about.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I have a motion that says be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library accepts policy FN-04, Intellectual Freedom as Presented. May I have a move and second, please?
Just one question. Chris, it's the question of having an additional point in there about who we do respond to if there's a, if that someone has some standing, that they're not doing a, beating a barrage. So if we could include that in.
Do you want to do a little work on that?
So we do have a policy for the request for reconsideration form. So what I'll do is I'll make a note that when we, we can actually dig into that one for our next policy meeting and make an addition, because I think it is an important one, and it'll save us, you know, having to explain ourselves, because it'll be right there in the policy.
Thanks, Paul. Paul moved it seconded by? Liz, thank you very much. All in favor? Harry, thank you.
Good. Thanks. And the next one, switching gears, is called Purpose of the Board Policy. It's actually governance.
That would be a good discussion.
Yeah, it's a governance one. So for those that are interested in the topic of governance, again, this one didn't change too much. But as Paul was saying, using consistent terminology and consistent order is important. So it was pointed out that the work plan, as it used to say, is actually called the annual work plan. So that's how we refer to it on an ongoing way. So we made a change to that. And then the library board's performance happens annually. So we just added that for clarity as well. Performance evaluation happens for all employees now annually. But this is just to do with the board. So again, not much in the way of changes, but it is important to outline sort of what our work is and how we go about it.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions on the purpose of the board? Liz?
Yeah, just a comment on the annual board performance review. I know with the previous board, I don't know if you've had any discussions about it, having not been at recent meetings. But the previous board had some concerns about, about the, I don't know, the validity or the performance process. And I thought it might be something that the board would take a look at and maybe reconsider or reevaluate it a little bit. It's, I don't know, it seems a little, it seemed a little self-serving in some ways. Maybe that's not the right way to put it. But I think that that's a document that needs to have a little bit of a review by the board before they do another performance review on themselves.
Yeah, thanks for the reminder. We did, we did hear this towards the end of last year, and I believe that David was in touch with Andrea to talk about a new refreshed approach to that. So.
We did, we did produce a new refreshed approach. Andrea? It, too, in some senses, wasn't quite what we wanted. So perhaps it can be a good idea if Andrea and I got back together and look at a different strategy. When we did, maybe when it sat there, but it was not quite where I think some members wanted it. Liz?
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't have an impact on this particular policy. I don't have, you know, any issue with that. But if the board, if you and Andrea, you know, wanted to have another look at it and bring it back to the board, you know, for review and comment, I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, okay. I think Andrea had a comment.
Oh, I just was gonna say that we did do some tweaks last year, and we plan to revisit it this year before we actually did the review. So, yeah, David and I will be in touch.
Thank you. Any other questions on the purpose of the board? Seeing none, I have a motion be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts policy GOV-01, Purpose of the Board as Presented. May I have a mover and second, please? Moved by? Sorry. Seconded by Lisa. All in favor? Harry, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Again, we're back to governance. This is governance number two. And the name of the policy is Library Board Orientation. Again, this is very important every four years when we elect a new board. And when we were creating our package that we gave you in the binder, we realized that there were sort of an update needed to bring things to your attention, such as a copy of the current budget, which of course is important, as well as a current organizational chart. We had a lot of changes, obviously, since the last board, and we wanted to capture that with the help of an organizational chart that was built originally by the HR department. And as well, you may recall that the North and South Ontario Library Service merged, so it's no longer called the Southern Ontario Library Service, it's just OLS now. So we made a change to that. And then on the second page, the related documents have just changed, OLS again, Ontario Library Service. And then the boot camp was updated. So some new resources that can help new board members when they're joining up with the library. So again, just some sort of minor changes to that one there, and it's a policy that's up for review again in 2026.
There are three new members of the board sitting in this room. Do any of you have any suggestions about the orientation you're given? But it seems to satisfy all the things you wanted to know?
Yeah, it did. I did ask about the organizational chart, I'm gonna come on forthwith. So, so, yeah, I was, I think, very, okay.
I think it was thorough and useful, this general material about our role within this civic stuff from the library service. That was well done, the binder is well put together, really helpful, like the paper.
You attended in person as well to the OLS.
I was going to, but we had a conflict.
Okay.
So I couldn't go. No, I think it was very well done.
Is there any comment?
Yeah, no, I thought the webinars were very good. And as well, I really appreciate the work that has gone into creating the orientation binder. Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thanks very much. I have a motion be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts policy GOV-02, Board Orientation as Presented. Any more further questions? Thank you. May I have a mover and second, please? By Liz, thank you. Seconded by Paul. All in favor? Harry, thank you.
Okay, moving right along to number three, Governance Three. This policy is called the Duties and Responsibilities of Individual Board Members. And this sort of just lays out the style of working, some recommendations or guidelines for how to communicate. Again, this is an important document, especially at the beginning of every four-year period, but also every year it's good to look it over. There were no changes proposed. The two, two of the policies that we looked at didn't require any changes even for, you know, grammar or anything. So this one is good to go, in our opinion.
Any questions on this? Everybody happy with their duties and responsibilities? Okay. Single question, I have a motion be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board accepts policy GOV-03, Duties and Responsibilities of Individual Board Members. That's. Mover, please, and seconder? By Dragon. Seconded by? Liz?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that concludes the policies that we had.
Okay, we'll move on to any business arising from the minutes. See any number raised, we'll move to new business. You want to do the brief overview of the budget first, Chris?
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, well, the goal as per last year is to make sure that Oscar Paloney gives us two thumbs up from KPMG, the auditors. We have been, according to him, been doing a pretty good job with our budget. The forecast, in terms of what he called sustainability, was on track for the next few years, as far as we could tell, mainly because we have a very healthy reserve allowing us to make certain decisions and moves as we go. The general style that I wanted to bring to this budget was balanced. So basically, like last year, there are a few areas that we know there's going to be increased costs, such as our commitment to sharing in the Ontario Library Consortium. Those costs typically have just gone up about $1,200 or $1,300. But whenever there's an increase, we were looking for ways in which to bring other areas of spending down so that our goal from the library's end was to come out even. So there were some requests from individual departments. So for example, the programming department to consider an increase. This was along the lines of, you know, we had some success with programming in the last little while, built up our numbers to pre-pandemic numbers. Would we consider, you know, bringing the total of, the pool of hours that we have for programming, which has typically stood at 50 hours per month, up to, say, 55 or even 60 hours to allow us to keep adding programs? As well, we saw a need to um, to allow us to to keep uh adding adding programs. Uh, as well, uh, we we saw a need to um uh, rather than looking for fundraising for something like a license to uh film films in the library. And we were hoping to like, if it's successful, uh, add it to the cost of our budget. So uh, there are a few little things that we might um uh, once we see where the numbers fall, come to you with proposals and it'll be well organized at that time. Um, but in the meantime, numbers are still coming in, and I had a meeting with the county finance uh department to to learn that um insurance is expected to go up fifteen percent. When I said that's what they increased it last year, uh, they said, yes, when will the madness end? Uh, we don't like, I don't personally know why insurance is going up so much, but it does include our liability and our content insurance for all of our books and furniture and computers. Um, and then also we added the van this year, so the fleet vehicle is is new as well. But it that's a very small amount. The actual payment uh won't be known until, I believe, February of next year, but it's it's negligible. Um, but overall, there are some things with within our budget that get decided. Uh, and I was kind of uh informed about what those costs are and what they're changing to. So the first one, insurance. Uh, the second one is benefits. There hadn't been increases with the benefits over time, but I think manual life has started to increase. And we were told to expect possibly five percent. Um, the thing about our budget season, as you'll recall, is that we started in the conversations in August. Um, but the board doesn't deliberate until mid-fall. It doesn't actually go into to the county for decision-making until, you know, the new year. And through at that time, the numbers are are changing. So what we do is try to give you a ballpark for what you expect, sort of worst-case scenario, and that's what I'm giving you today. So at the uh, I would expect the benefits would be uh start at five percent increase. Um, wages are, this is a tough one to uh decide this year because in the past, as you may recall, and for the new board members, I'll tell you that um we typically tie uh our increases for cost of living to what the union has done. Although we're non-union, we need some sort of baseline to to measure off of. And in the past, they've been increases of point one point five or one point seven five. And uh, the last time the board um uh voted uh and approved uh that arrangement was for a three-year period, which came to an end this year. So that's the collective agreement with the union is currently being renegotiated. So those numbers, uh, we won't know what they are until um uh probably January, when those negotiations are happening. The uh, finance uh uh department is telling us that we should probably pick a baseline percentage. And there, I don't know what it'll be. It might be like around two percent. They said it would probably be higher than in past years, only because inflation has been higher than in past years. Um, but we don't want to shoot too high because it does have an impact on our overall budget. And we don't want to go too low because we know that we need to catch up to whatever uh, the union is going to propose. So that one's sort of just frozen for now with more information uh to come. And then amortization, this is a kind of a nebulous uh framing. Um, it's not even clear to me, to be honest, but we have a collection of books. They have a certain value. Um, over time, we write off the value of those books and also uh larger capital items that we accrued, such as the new van. It does not affect our bottom line and our spending, but the amortization still gets uh evaluated, and they're they're expecting that things are going to be um evaluated at a higher percentage, only because to replace the van, uh, you know, say in a year or two, it could be a lot more than it is when we first bought it. Um, but again, it doesn't affect our bottom line. So the main uh changes would be uh insurance, benefits and wages. So things that uh we don't really have a a say on. And then just to summarize one more time, we intend to come in uh uh, at sort of a status quo budget from the library's perspective. Um, it's sort of like an equalizer on a stereo. Uh, if one goes up, one goes down a little bit, and um we're sort of just finishing the negotiations with our department head staff to uh figure out what their needs are in context with the others. So by October, you're going to have a first draft with all the numbers plugged in, and we'll be able to sort of uh look uh closely at each area of spending in the library, and you'll see, you know, the um uh, ways in which it went up and down. So at this point, I'll, that's a broad overview. I thought I'd take a break, and then if anyone has any questions about the uh the approach to the budget, the uh way in which uh we do it over time, or if you have questions on a new board member, I'm all ears.
Chris, from an accounting point of view, the reason uh capital assets are amortized over a period of time, it gradually brings the value down so that you'd never get to a point at one point in time where you have to trade off the whole thing. It gradually brings it down.
Right.
It's just a standard accounting principle. It has no impact whatsoever.
Yeah, yeah. I I mean, in my discussion, I was asking a lot of questions about all the things that I I sort of, I I'm told by the um finance department because we're sharing resources with the other departments, such as E N S and um fire.
Yeah.
So the fleet vehicle insurance is all calculated based on a larger number of factors. So.
Any questions? Paul, and then um.
Adele.
Wasn't sure who's handling the yards or duck. He said Paul, you're up.
I just wanted to confirm that there's no major purchases, like the van was last year. There's no big computer expenditure or or anything that's on the horizon, not big like the van, but even, you know, bigger than.
Yeah. Great question. So um, it it's a good thing to talk about because there is behind uh the digital strategy that's to come from the county, uh, a ten-year uh asset management plan, G A M S or A M P, I guess it's called. And the library um generally knows that um what to expect in spending before we get to that year. So this past year um was last year was a a higher spending year. It kind of peaked at twenty-three thousand dollars. And that's why you'll notice in our twenty twenty-three budget, our automation um amount was quite quite high. And we 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 were going to max that out as as expected. Uh, this year, the spending for computers and a few other things um was set to be a a a lot lower, probably um, you know, at least maybe two-thirds of that um amount. But then we were getting new numbers such as O L S, O L C, uh, costs to join uh in with the other libraries for our ebooks and all of those things. So uh, we're on track for uh spending less on the big-ticket items. Uh, but certainly um, having the reserve means that, you know, we could come to the board at any point if there was a need for say, uh, there's a flood in a one of the library basements, like say Stanhope, for example, we needed to um replace some items, like then we would ask for a capital purchase and dip into those funds.
Okay.
But yeah, within the scope of this budget, like I don't anticipate that we're uh purchasing anything uh large, with the exception of um maybe the programmers ask for this license uh for showing movies. So this is uh allows us to have partnerships with, say, the cultural center in Minden and do a joint uh movie showing, and I believe the license comes in at about fifteen hundred dollars. But it's one of those things, if you get it fundraised and then it's a big hit, and you don't have it in your budget, then you can't do it every year. You have to say it's sorry and you can't do it. So that's why why we'll come back to you with a a package and a and a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Adele?
Do you think we have any appetite for increasing library hours? And thus wages? Um, I'm particularly thinking of advocating for the Stanhope branch, which is the only branch in Algonquin Highlands. It only has twelve hours of service during the week.
Yeah, so um, we did uh for Algonquin Highlands specifically, uh, David and I presented this summer to um to the the council there. And one of the discussions that had been started by our board member, Jennifer, was to talk about reinstating library services from the Dorset um branch. We have like a quarter of our employees live in the Halls Lake and uh Algonquin uh Islands area. And um, you know, we want to find work for for folks. So uh, if we can um add library hours, then that's certainly something we're interested in. We, I don't see it as um like, correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, but do you think, like, if we had a plan for reinstating library services in Dorset, that it would would be happening in twenty twenty-four?
I I I would think uh that that might be the case. You know, I I know that this is something that council really needs to talk about, you know, in conjunction with the any improvements and repairs that are being made to the rec center, but I I think we need to have a little bit more discussion about that. But if there was a change, it would happen during twenty twenty-four, I would think.
So then, I mean, my time.
There have been previous discussions and concerns raised about Stanhope because, you know, it was closed for so long. And it just seemed like, you know, we, uh, you know, that personally, last year I asked for some additional programming in hours for Stanhope because we'd been kind of behind the eight ball for some time. So but you have to consider, Adele, that, you know, when you, when you boost hours, so goes the budget.
Yes.
So our biggest expense is is the labor.
Certainly.
Um, however, I mean, um, uh the elephant in the room is always, has always been, since I've been here, the fact that we have um allocation of resources that may may not make a lot of sense in terms of equity, such as the fact that um there are four branches in Highlands East. And so it comes up every now and then. We discuss this. And as it turns out, like, I didn't want to um uh, throw a curveball for Cease, but I I, we have been approached by patrons asking about whether they're closing buildings in uh Highlands East in the next couple of years, only because, you know, there was rumors about uh building, uh, sorry, centralizing um municipal services in one location. And then using our sort of divesting of assets that may be underutilized. Is that a fair way to phrase it, Cease?
Yeah, the big thing is too, is you got to remember that we're in the process right now of looking into a new building. Uh, that building is got an architect looking at it at the moment, so we're probably going to have some finished information on it uh, early next year, we're hoping. As to when the ground is going to be uh broken, that I don't know. But it will obviously end up with buildings being liquidated. It's just doesn't make sense to not do that. And uh, that will probably impact um the 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 library system. So um, yeah, there there is going to have to be something done uh before the end of this term, for sure.
Thank you. Um, oh, Liz, sorry.
Yeah, you know, I I know that it's a an extremely sensitive and challenging topic, but I I think for quite some time, there's there's been a feeling that there's a bit of an inequity. If you look at at the similarities between Highlands East and Algonquin Highlands um, in in population and and services, that, you know, there's definitely an inequity about what's offered in Highlands East versus what's offered in in Algonquin Highlands. But, you know, that's a discussion for another day.
The good news is that since uh we built our momentum back almost to pre-pandemic uh numbers, we have a fair year in which to look at um the the data to support library usage that uh I I I trust now. And I do believe that, you know, before my time, and I think uh, there are some members of the board that sat on this committee, there was sort of, in the same way that we did a strategic plan for the library, a a service plan um that was done, and I I agree that's in my office, uh, that looked at these uh same concepts, uh, which obviously have changed over time. We have new opportunities. My fear is that, you know, if we can't have a space at at Dorset and we're closing potentially uh down the road and on some uncertain timeline, other branches, we we're high, we're in the process of hiring right now. So we're going to have a workforce that we need to find them jobs to do, or we're going to have to, you know, talk about our so the this is a bigger conversation. It's an important one. We have the data. We have some opportunities in Stanhope and Dorset, and we really need to um, you know, either start a committee to talk about it or.
Yeah. Adele?
Yeah, I just, I just want to further say that it it seems in the last few years that service hours have have decreased by dribs and drabs at several of the branches. For example, Minden um, I think has three less hours open than they used to have. There used to be a long day at Minden where they'd be open um. First of all, every day, the every day that they were open, they would open at ten in the morning. And then on the long day, they would be open from ten till eight at night. This has now shrunk so that their long day is from noon to seven, and the same thing's happening in Dysart. So I just want to point out that over time, the total number of library hours being offered in the county has decreased, and I don't see why that's happening.
But if I do recall, maybe Andrea can remind me, um, I believe this was so that we could uh open other branches in Minnesas as well.
Yeah, we had quite a, we had quite a piece of work done on out of rationalize all the library hours so that everybody got a little bit rather than somebody getting none. And that was by the board last year.
Did total hours of service decrease then at all, or were they just?
I don't, Andrew is the best person to.
I I would say not, but I'll let Andrea comment on that, and then Liz, Liz come in. Go ahead, Andrea.
Um, I, we didn't decrease any of the hours in the last uh rejig. What we did is uh kind of reorganize them so that it wasn't so many uh so much time driving between three locations in Highlands East. So the branches were paired up so that a staff member who was driving often from uh Minden or Dysart would only work at two different branches in a day. So we reconfigured the hours, but we didn't diminish them. Um, I I, you know, I haven't, I wasn't here in the time when the Minden hours changed, but my understanding is that um, we now double staff our two largest branches, uh, in Dysart and Minden. And um, previously, I think that they, there were two staff working on those long days with overlap, but there were times when they were there alone. Um, and, you know, times, times change. We have more security incidents. Uh, staff definitely feel more comfortable in our larger branches when there are two uh staff working. Um, and we have admin staff who rotate through the the Minden branch on weekdays so that when one staff member is um taking a lunch hour, the other staff member still has um another person on site in general. So um, I think that that's potentially one of the um sort of structural reasons why the Minden hours might be fewer than than in previous years.
Right. We didn't have the double staffing feature, and so one day is when we have one hundred and sixty to two hundred and ten people in. Like, we really do need the two people, you know.
Thank you. And Liz, you had your hand up?
You know, I I was just going to reiterate what Andrea said, that, you know, overall, the hours did not change, but that there was, there were issues about uh about safety and security and 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 a bit of a shuffle made. And, uh, you know, I I think that it was a, it was actually a pretty tough discussion. You, you know, you want to be as fair as you can be across the board. Um, and and I think, you know, overall, the balance was was good, um, and no overall reduction in hours. Just the duplication, safety, you know, that that's basically what might have led to the change for Minden.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Chris, thank you. And Paul, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment about the parts of the county that have great physical distances from one community to the other, like Highland East and in uh Algonquin Highlands. It's, it's not a criticism, and it's not a um we have to do this, but I I just think we need to keep in mind, have a great deal of sympathy for the people that are poor, that that don't have the the economics to have a good vehicle and and that that have difficulty in getting to the services and to a library. I have a, you know, real soft spot for those people that we have to keep them in mind when we go forward with all the things that we're doing with our services. Like, I just feel like I have to raise, yeah, that's fine. Thanks very much for raising that.
Um, no other comment on this then? Well, oh, sorry, Steve, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Yeah, the one one of the things that we we are absolutely totally aware of in in Highland Seas is is that we can't, we can't be spending over a million dollars on a building without some kind of a consolidation of 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 what assets we do have. Uh, and and in in the process of doing that, we're not just looking at but we're we're not just looking at the libraries or are the libraries not being excluded. What we're basically looking at is the overall service deliverability that we have within the municipality to meet the requirements of our people in the types of services that they are expecting and looking for. Having said that, uh, as as Liz pointed out, you could only do so much with what you've got. You you can't be all things to all people. You, you can't be all things to all people. So there are going to be a series of adjustments made within Highlands East. It does not surprise me at all if libraries are not included in that. Uh, that will have to be made in order for us to be able to accommodate the plan that we're going forward. And I would assume that based on what I'm, I'm being told as of yesterday, yesterday, that, 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 that con- conversation is going to happen sometime in two thousand and twenty four. Uh, and, and at that point in time, we're gonna have to make some serious decisions.
Thank you. Um, no other hands up. We're going to move then to Andrea's presentation. All yours, Andrea.
All right. Hi, everyone. Um, Erin has my presentation, and she is, get it up on the screen. All right. Excellent. So uh, I am Andrea Brown. I think all of you know me, but in case there's any viewers out there who don't, um, I'm Andrea Brown, and I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to tell you a little bit about my role at the library as the Public Services Manager and Deputy CEO. All right, next slide, Erin, please. Um, so I know you were just talking about uh, the org chart in your uh, board packages, but we've actually recently done some new hires, so I thought I'd uh, insert this slide right at the beginning because I'm uh, gonna mention things like the admin team and the branch team. Um, and I just really want to have, uh, you had, you to have a sense of who I mean when I say those things. So the admin team, of course, you know, Chris, um, Melanie and I are in the, in the meetings, and you've had presentations from our other admin team members. Um, but we also have a huge team of frontline uh, branch staff who work very, very hard uh, in our branches every day to uh, help people with their questions and their tech questions, their um, you know, reading needs, and uh, so I just wanted to start off by saying it takes this whole huge team of every single person whose name is on the screen to um, make the library services ha- happen across the county for people who live here, people cottagers, people who are visiting um, uh, the area. So it's, every, every single person on this list brings their own unique skills and expertise, and it takes us all working together. Um, so a key part about my role at the library, to see this whole big team, is um, keeping the big picture in mind of the, you know, our mandate and the objectives that we're working towards as a team, and then um, figuring out all the ways that the people here uh, in the chart, the, their portfolios, um, their projects, the glitches that come up, how all of these moving parts um, fit together, and ensuring that we all are working together in the same direction, moving forward. Um, next slide, please, Erin. All right, so here we've got some fun photos. Uh, the one on the left is uh, from uh, branch and all staff training day. And the one on the right is some staff members uh, at our Stanhope branch uh, doing the accessible lift training. Um, so I, we've had a lot of staffing change, as you know, uh, over the last year, and so one thing that my role is really involved uh, with is collaborating with uh, Chris, CEO, and um, the HR manager at the county to do uh, job competitions, to look at job descriptions and see if we need to tweak anything um, to, yep, so doing the hiring processes and the onboarding training. Uh, I work with, very closely with Melanie, the Admin Support Coordinator on scheduling, so um, uh, and as well with Hillary, our Programming Outreach Coordinator, because we have to figure out, okay, what's gonna make, uh, meet all our operational needs? Are we gonna have staff to do the programming? Um, we need to get our health, health and safety checks done. Uh, it's actually quite an elaborate uh, chess game of getting all the schedule together, so that is one um, part of my role. Um, I also work with new staff as they're onboarded, so going through, getting set up with their, um, you know, their county training, their library training. We pair people up with more experienced staff members, both in admin team and the branch team, to really make sure that they understand um, all the things that they need to know in order to provide excellent service to members of our public. Um, so we do a lot of library training. We also get people signed up for the Excel uh, course, uh, not like Excel, like spreadsheets, but the Ontario Library Service um, course, to make sure that people who are coming into the organization without uh, library technician diploma or M O S degree, um, get those kind of public library fundamentals. Um, so we do kind of that library training, but we also do practical hands-on training, so things like in the, in the photo there, the picture of the the lift training, everybody who goes to work at Stanhope, we get them trained up with Scott Bond and his team at Algonquin Highlands to, you know, make sure they know how to use the accessibility lift. Um, you know, when the county introduces a new uh, software program for payroll, I make sure that a, all the team gets trained up, so they know how to enter their time sheets. Um, I also work with the admin team to coordinate the all-staff training day, so sometimes that involves bringing in an outside speaker. So at our last one, we had um, Jack Beach from the Canadian Mental Health Association come up from Peterborough, actually, because we were struggling with um, uh, some patrons with mental health issues at our, our Dysart branch, and so he came and did a presentation to support staff uh, to, you know, help us figure out ways to, uh, to, to cope with that patron. Uh, so sometimes it's that type of training, other times um, it's internal training, so uh, for example, the Collections Development Coordinator Cheryl and I did a presentation at our last staff day about weeding, so all the steps that you need to go through when you come across a grubby book and um, what to do with it, all kind of step by step, we had a flowchart. Um, so that's another type of training that we offer. Um, as well, in the past, we had um, performance reviews for admin staff, but up until um, I started in this role last year, we didn't actually do performance reviews for our branch staff, so that's something that I um, launched uh, last year. Um, and, yeah, so that helps uh, set goals and um, you know, keep the people motivated to try new things and uh, gives us an opportunity to have a good conversations about uh, about public service. Next slide, please, Erin. All right. Um, so we do have all of these amazing programs and services that we offer to the public, and it really is a lot of behind the scenes work, so. Um, you know, a lot of what the, the media sees and the public sees are the, you know, the the exciting launch of something, but it's actually a huge amount of work behind the scenes that we do together to make all of those things happen. Um, so, um, and, you know, for example, yesterday I got a phone call for, or not a phone call, an email from Algonquin Highlands, and we have the date for the new carpet installation in Stanhope Branch, which was very exciting. Um, and, but what that means is a whole series of uh, things that we're gonna have to do, so we're gonna have to uh, coordinate with Melanie on scheduling, with um, IT and Erin on moving the computers around with, you know, public uh, information uh, about any dates that we may need to be closed, and so all of those things take a whole lot of people working together in order to, to make projects successful. Uh, it really does take a big team. Um, and because, of course, we've been talking about our branches are owned by four different municipalities, we have lots of different people that we uh, communicate with uh, at, you know, for each municipality. Uh, sometimes things come up that are planned, sometimes it's unexpected, you know, a ceiling leak, that type of thing. Um, other times we're approached about some really neat initiatives, so an example from Minnan Hills, um, the former uh, manager of Parks and Rec and Facilities approached us last year about uh, making a skating pass. Um, and so uh, what we did is we worked together with the municipal team, with the admin team, had to figure out how to catalog it, how to tell people about it, what the pass would go in. Um, so that's something that you know, lodges to the public with uh, you know, it's very popular and people are excited about it, but there's a lot of kind of communication behind the scenes that, that goes into something like that. Um, can you hit the next slide, Erin, please? All right. Um, so uh, part of my role is being on call, so this is a duty that I share with Chris uh, after hours and on weekends. Um, so we, we take turns being the person to call in case someone's sick or their car doesn't start, or it can be many, many different types of uh, emergencies. Um, also, uh, the person responsible whenever Chris is on vacation or away for some reason. Um, part of my role is providing content for reporting. I'm a good second pair of eyes for uh, editing and proofreading, and, and also I'm a sounding board for um, you know, for the CEO, for admin staff, and for the branch team. Um, so we do offer great service, but sometimes uh, we do get patron feedback that is, you know, constructive, so one part of my job is um, responding to complaints and feedback from uh, the public. So sometimes that uh, means we, you know, make changes and improvements to a service. Um, other times that involves having a coaching conversation with staff members about how things could go better next time. Um, and sometimes that involves having a conversation with a patron, um, you know, just kind of explaining what library expectations are, like. Um, you know, you, this happened a few times, you need to keep your books where your pet bunny can't eat them. Um, so there's all different, you know, types of conversations that, that I have with, with members of public. Um, I also um, work with staff to problem solve, so we, you know, welcome everyone in our library spaces and um, you know, we try to be welcoming, uh, but sometimes we do have patron behavior that is problematic, so I, I, you know, try to problem solve with staff, with other colleagues. Um, you know, we're, we're doing swim teams with some problematic behavior in Dysart, so Chris has reached out to the uh, bylaw officers. Um, uh, we were brainstorming to, and we've purchased some games that we can, we're gonna try to play with them in the program room, so it, it, a lot of it, my role is kind of problem solving with different team members to um, resolve situations that, that arise. Um, and another part of what I do is um, liaising with county staff, with municipal staff, given you a few examples of that already. Um, and, yeah, can I, can you move to the next slide, Erin? All right, uh, so this one has a few things on it, so um, a lot of my work is internal, um, but you know, there's lots of external uh, opportunities for me to connect with uh, uh, community members as well. So you're all invited to Bookapalooza, which is uh, happening this, this Friday and Saturday, the Men and Crow and Club. Um, so that's one of the committees that I uh, participate in. Um, and Chris will be interviewing Lawrence Hill on Friday. Um, and so all members of the team, uh, you know, especially Hillary, our programmer, but, you know, also Chris and myself and, you know, all of our team members try to, you know, build the literacy in our community and um, you know, find opportunities to connect with people and make the literary art something that's celebrated here in Halber. Um, so a couple of other examples, so um, in Highlands East, I've connected a few times with Tina Jackson from the Central Food Network, um, and some things that we've tried uh, out is having a pilot um, bin at the Wilberforce Branch, so you can see uh, on that slide there, I think um, is the, a picture of the bin, so people can make food donations in the branch. Uh, and then there's a picture on the right-hand side at the Cardiff Branch of Tina and I, and so we've used the um, the Cardiff Branch as a place for distribution of toys around Christmas, so on a day that the library's closed. Um, and so families can come in in a place that's comfortable and uh, pick up, pick up toys for their kids, and so families who, who don't have the means to purchase those toys themselves, so really trying to leverage our space and our connections, um, finding unique ways that we can support our community partners and our community members. Um, other parts of my role include committee work, so um, I participate, provide input for the Board Policy Committee. I um, have been appointed uh, this year as a member of the Joint Health and Safety Committee at the county, so I underwent um, a bunch of training days and have been out doing community, you know, inspect, not community, uh, inspections of the, the EMS bases um, and the, the county building, so learning lots in, in that role as a member of that committee. And when Chris is away, uh, I sit on the Dysart Cultural Resources Committee as well. And that's uh, lots of interesting conversations there. So, next slide, Erin. Thanks. So, um, you know, they say in real estate, location, 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 but in my role um, at the library, the thing that I really try to keep in mind is communication, communication, communication. Um, because there's a, a lot of moving parts, uh, and a lot of people into, like, internal staff members, municipal staff members, county partners. Um, we share spaces, we um, have the public coming in. And, and so, a really big part of my role is kind of fitting all the pieces together and ensuring that we are headed in the same direction as much as possible. Uh, and focusing on our, our mission, what we um, are striving to do together. And um, that's up on the, the screen there with a beautiful picture of the Dorset lockers um, with artwork by Noelia, who's one of our staff members, the, the Anna Jonah lockers in the middle, and Tessa did a great job designing the, all the vinyl, and they look fabulous, so. Um, yeah, so uh, try to be quick. I know you, the uh, councilors had a long day of meeting, so uh, I guess, uh, next slide, Erin, like to say thank you um, to you, because I think it's, it's really great that you're taking the time to hear from staff members about the inner workings of the library, because a lot of what goes on behind the scenes, um, you know, isn't evident, so you know, our couriers, for example, Sean and Bruce, they're moving things around the, the system, and people are excited when they get their book, and um, yeah, a lot's happening behind the scenes, and we're doing it together as a, a big team, so. Thank you, and uh, if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, Andrea. Uh, question from Liz, please?
Um, not a question. I, I just wanted to, and I did say this in Algonquin Islands, I just wanted to reiterate how absolutely fabulous the lockers ended up looking indoors it. Uh, you know, now they're, they're safe, attractive, you know, they really get a message out, you know, using our logo. I, I just think that they, they look great, and and I hope to see them, uh, you know, in another location someday soon, or something beyond that.
Yeah, well, big kudo, kudos to Tessa. She um, she did a really, really great job on those, and, and Noel is her as well, so.
Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing that I have a motion, be it resolved at the Halberin County Public Library Board, we please for information purposes, the two thousand and twenty-three Public Services Librarian Deputy CEO Presentation. May I have a mover, please? Lisa and Adele. And just before I ask for approval, I just wanted to thank you, Andrea, for a great presentation. You're on, you're almost as busy as the boss, aren't you?
Not quite, not quite, but busy.
I'll appear with motion, please. Thank you very much. Motion period. Now, um, I have a motion, um, be it resolved pursuant to the Public Libraries Act, Act of nineteen ninety, CP forty-four, section one six one point one, the Halberin County Library Board enters into a closed session for the following reasons. Personnel matters about an identifiable individual. Did I miss something?
Uh, not at all. I, I thought I'd just preface the, the reason for the closed meeting and um, make public information now that the board and the staff um, know already, which is that um, I had put in my um, uh, resignation on Monday morning uh, of this week, and it's strictly for um, health reasons. And I just uh, wanted to take the opportunity to thank uh, the board and the staff for my time here. It was not as long as I anticipated. I thought it was a three-to-five-year plan. Um, uh, but I, I feel my hand is slightly forced, and then I do, I do need to uh, to go and, and fix myself up um, after an injury that's come back with a vengeance, so um, really, it, it's important to get the word out to uh, the, the public, because I know that people are asking already. because I know that people are asking already in my various meetings. Um but we had created the uh closed session to discuss the implications of that, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Chris. Okay, we'll go in, we'll go in uh in the closed session now. I need a a mover in a second to do that. Moved by Paul. Seconded by Lisa. All in favor? Area. Okay, we're gonna go into a and we're meeting.
It's not true, it was.
Five eleven.
The batteries died on this. Can you tell, Erin? Don't hang on. Weird, okay?
Five, all right?
Yeah. I should have done this before we get in camera, Paul, Jack. There we go, okay.
Okay, we're live now.
Okay, fine.
Thanks, Erin.
So just before we adjourn the meeting, other, is there anything that the um elected representatives would like to add from their perspective as part of the municipal roundtable? That, Liz?
I can't tell you how excited I was to see the door finally going on the Stan Hope Library. I I just, I know even then there was the odd little glitch, but you know, it's it's been so long. It I just, I was pretty excited to see that and and I'm really happy to hear that we're, you know, the final step in the carpet is finally going in and we're we're going to be down to regular, regular business, looking good.
Looks very good. Chris?
Uh in other good news, I just wanted to tell everyone that the van goes into more to county signs for the vinyl wraps. It'll have colors already added by our next trip. The maiden voyage was today, but on Saturday it'll look like a library van, so. Very good. We're excited about that.
Great. Will it, will it look much the same as the uh, as the pictures that you've shown us with graphics on it?
Yeah, so Tessa uh really just needed to see the van and the spaces so that the proportions are all right, but she's using those same shapes, uh the triangles, the circles, and then the uh various uh colors along with the logo. And then I think the back does have that magnifying glass and whatnot um with our contact information, so.
Great.
Yeah, we're excited to see it.
Good. Uh Lisa sees anything that? No?
You're gonna have it there. Lisa?
That would be a great idea. In fact, there's no reason why we couldn't bring it to Friday. We can't bring it on Saturday because it's gonna be in use, but yeah.
Okay, thanks very much. I have a motion, uh be it resolved at September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the Halliburton County Library Board, Library Board now adjourned. Could I have a mover in second, please? Adele? And Paul, would you ever handle?
Just before we close, should we have a motion to um for what we did enclosed or no?
No, I don't think so.
Don't need anything?
Okay, just one.
I think we we don't need a motion for that.
There was no direction given, okay.
We're just uh not, no direction given to staff or anything like that. We'll follow it as an action for the board. Okay. Okay, I'll pay with the motion. Harry, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.